... to order at 5:31. We are all in person, so we do not need to take roll call vote.
I will call the Union 26 School Committee to order at 5:31.30. And since we're all here, no need to take a roll call.
Okay, so we have a pretty important discussion to have tonight regarding our hopeful super- future superintendent. And...
Listen to me.
Yeah. Do you have anything you want to say before I hear?
Yes, I do. First, I really want to thank all those who took leadership roles and also other roles in the search for the new superintendent. Jennifer Anna Margaret. Martha and William. Got William. And Martha. Martha. And I also want to thank Sarah Best for taking a lead role in all of this because she really did. I was mostly MIA. So I want to thank all of you for doing that. The other thing I want to say is that, second, I want to apologize for the email that I sent to the ASC ASC and Union 26 on an incident that took place immediately after we finished interviewing the second candidate. I apologize for how I said it, not for what I said. One of the most difficult things for me to try is to try to assume a positive intent on the words and actions of individuals and groups, including my own family, with my kids, etc., to just do a positive thing. In this instance, I failed to do so.
...school committee to order at five thirty one. We are all in person, so we do not need to take roll call vote.
I will call the Union Twenty-Sixth School Committee to order at five thirty one point three oh. And since we're all here, no you need to take a roll call.
Okay, so we have a pretty important discussion to have tonight regarding our hopeful super- future superintendent. And...
Listen to me.
Yeah. Do you have anything you want to say beforehand or?
Yes, I do. First, I really want to thank all those who took leadership roles and also other roles in the search for the new superintendent. Jennifer, Anna, Margaret. Martha and William. Got William. And Martha, Martha. And also want to thank Sarah Best for taking a lead role in all of this because she really did. I was mostly MIA. So I want to thank all of you for doing that. The other thing I want to say is that, second, I want to apologize for the email that I sent to the RSC ASC and Union Twenty-Sixth on an incident that took place immediately after we finished interviewing the second candidate. I apologize for how I said it, not for what I said. One of the most difficult things for me to try is to try to assume a positive intent on the words and actions of individuals and groups, including my own family, with my kids, et cetera, to just do a positive thing. In this instance, I failed to do so. Judging by the response to my email, neither did those who responded attributed positive intent to what I wrote. For me, when interviewing candidates at this level, there should not be any hint of favoritism expressed by members of the committee to any candidate interviewed. Having most, if not all, of the three other town representatives engage in an extended conversation with one of the candidates immediately after interview, interview while Amherst was in session crossed the line and afforded and afforded one candidate access to more intimate interactions with members of the committee committee that was not afforded to other candidates. This particular candidate is a skilled communicator, a professional at forming instant micro connections with people, and she surely took advantage of this opportunity. If these members wanted to have this kind of conversation, then the forums offered ample opportunity to do so, but not immediately after the interview. It was inappropriate and certainly gave the impression of favoritism. Thank you.
Anna?
I just want to say that I'm not entirely sure where you got your information from. But we did not actually have an extended conversation with the candidate after the interview. She spent most of her time talking to a member of the community, and we only saw her briefly as she was exiting through the doors. We talked to her to greet her and say, thank, thank her for coming to our interview and make sure that she was able to find her car in the dark. We, other committee members, had a little bit of a conversation amongst ourselves for an extended period of time, none of which included committee business, or a very small portion contained a little bit of community of committee business between two individuals, not more than two individuals.
And I joined.
And then, and then we talked about kids. And so I just want to make it clear that we did not engage in an extended conversation with the candidate.
All right, I take that, but when I walked out there, I walked dead into the conversation, right into it.
When we were talking about kids.
All right, with whom, with her?
Okay, I think we are getting off topic.
That doesn't make any difference, but it did not appear to me, what I saw, to be appropriate. That's it.
Tillman?
Since you mentioned three towns, that points at me. I just want to say I had nothing to do with that. I went to my car and went home.
Okay, Margaret?
I was one of those people, and we spent most of the time talking about hockey and kids playing hockey. We did not have a conversation with the candidate. I did not have a conversation. I don't think any of us did, so I'm sorry that it looked that way, but...
It did appear that way because she was standing right there.
We did not.
Okay, let's move on.
Right down there.
So... We have three very qualified candidates. We have received lots of community feedback. Is there anyone that would like to start? Jennifer?
Okay. So we have a really big decision in front of us, and I think a really crucial part of our decision-making process is hearing from each other about our perspectives and opinions. I, I think that's a crucial part, actually, so anyway. And so I'm, and I'm going to share my current perspective, but I'm open to being influenced by what I hear from all of you. So that being said, right now, Dr. Herman is my top choice. I think she has everything we're looking for in terms of her experience and skills and her focus on being student-centered. And she's the only candidate who satisfies our preferred qualification of having experience as a superintendent. When I look at the stakeholder input, the, the report from the stakeholder input sessions that were held, where people told us what they want to see in our next superintendent, they said someone who has, who is a great listener, has thick skin, and who is student-centered, and I think Dr. Herman is the best fit. In addition, she received the highest rankings from those who filled out the individual input form and the ranking form. So Dr. Herman is my top choice right now.
Thank you. Anna?
So I would also like to refer to some of the input that we've received from the community. So through the, both the feedback forms after community sessions or whenever people chose to fill them out, and then also the ranking form that we received. The forums indicate sort of an overwhelming lean towards Siomara Herman. She was by far ranked first by more people than any other candidate, and she was by far ranked last least of all three candidates. So I actually liked both Dr. Herman and Dr. Menard quite a bit. I did like Susan Gilson. I think that she was still my third favorite candidate of the three. I felt that some of her responses in our interview were a little bit more general, general and sort of not very specific, and I think the other two candidates did a slightly better job of answering with specifics and giving concrete examples of some of their experiences with the different issues. I do appreciate that Dr. Herman has been a superintendent, and I think that that is potentially helpful, and I do recognize the fact that she has no experience in Massachusetts. That being said, I would probably still lean towards Dr. Herman.
Thank you. Tillman?
So first of all, I want to thank all three candidates for interviewing with us, and all three of them seem to have prepared very well and tried to understand what our school district looks like and, you know, what we need. And, you know, gave us, you know, good input on, on how they see us moving forward. I don't want to talk about the rankings because you asked what we think, and so based on my personal, you know, perception from the interactions and the interviews that we had here, to me, the decision comes down between Dr. Herman and Dr. Menard. And the trade-offs to me are that Dr. Menard has experience in, significant experience in Massachusetts, which I think is an important piece. And Dr. Herman having experience at the superintendent level of, you know, seemingly also quite complex school district. And, and so those are kind of the, the trade-offs I'm, I'm looking at in general.
Margaret?
So I would say similar that, that my, think that two that I would consider would be Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman. I like the fact that Dr. Herman was concise. She could give us answers that didn't take too long, but were complete. And I think that's going to be important for communication. I was a little bit concerned, although Dr. Menard told us she intentionally took the track and took jobs to be supervisor, that she did not spend very many years in any of the positions in leadership, and that concerns me. She wasn't really necessarily around to see the results of the things that she attempted to do. And I think one thing that pushes me a little bit towards Dr. Herman is some of what I think were student comments about her ability to talk to them. They felt like she talked to them in language that they could understand, and the other candidates did not necessarily. They talked with their language about being an administrator and not about the students as people. So I think that tends to push me towards Dr. Herman.
Bridgette?
So I just want to echo what a lot of people have said, that I feel like the search committee just did such a terrific job making like a very inclusive and complete process, and I don't feel like I could even have more information to make the decision with than I do, which is rare for me. I like a lot of information, but it's like from really varied sources. I feel like I've got a three sixty view. So I just thank you very much for your work. It was really great. And then I think that the way that I looked at it was to make pros and cons or like strengths and areas where, where, that might bubble up for me. But when I did that, it was very clear that I also have top two candidates, and that's Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman. So the thing that I really could not look past with Dr. Herman was the progression in the way that her career grew, in the way, just like one after another, she kept going to more responsibility, but within the same system. That means those people knew her deeply and well and still felt like she could come up. And she was a Yale Fellow for this work. You know, that's nothing to sneeze at as well. So that was really impressive. And on the other side of things, some of our more vulnerable students, our ELL learners, our special ed students gave feedback that they really felt heard, seen, and listened to by her. So I feel like those things were really terrific. I'm just going to say the downsides I see too. One is Massachusetts is a very insular and closed place in the way they make decisions. And the networks a lot of times are behind the ways that you get funds, get connections, make things move. And because of that, I, in that regard, obviously, Joanie, Joanie Menard's the stronger candidate, right? And then the second piece was just something that strikes me personally was we've had some trouble in Amherst with the, oh, with the situation regarding the teachers' union not getting along great with the candidates, and she said she had a bit of a love-hate relationship there. On the other hand, it sounded like she managed a very difficult situation very well in that same regard. And with Dr., Dr. Menard, I really loved like the, the depth of the work in the Deval Patrick STEM Advisory Committee, like going back, coming through with two innovation pathways, which are a huge deal for working on some of the disparities we see in our high school, those sorts of pieces. And she really went when asked the question about the healing in the community to talk about how we could come together, how she would start with making sure everybody feels safe, everyone feels listened to, et cetera. I think both candidates were strong in that way, but she stuck out like that, obviously, on the downside. She comes from a predominantly white district. We're not that. And, but I felt she spoke to that very well. And the, I think that's basically my thinking about the two candidates. When it comes down to it, I think we need two things, someone who can help us heal and someone who can navigate the complexities, the data, the systems, the budgets, those types of pieces. I think both candidates could do it well.
Deb?
So I don't have a whole lot to add. I've gotten some of the same feedback from the, the community, the educators. I do think maybe more so than the rest of the committee that all three candidates were solid. When I went back and looked at their interviews and their answers to the interview questions, I, I, I felt like they were all good answers. I do feel like Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman are the best fits for our community. One of the things I particularly appreciated about Dr. Herman was her interview style. I felt that she showed us, or she showed me, I saw kind of who she would be in our district. She talked about relationships she had started already, and that's sort of what I got feedback from the community, that there were students who had positive experiences with her, and, and the teachers, some of them, made those observations. So instead of saying, "I'm a great communicator," I felt like that was demonstrated to the community. And even in these little interactions within the interview, I felt that was different. So I appreciated that about her. I feel like, generally speaking, to be a teacher, there's an artistry to it. It's not a science. You can't just box it and hand it over. And I felt that kind of intangible with her in terms of, again, building relationships, looking at the bigger picture. I felt like her insight into how she would build her administrative team, asking the administrators, sitting down with them, having an interview with them as to not only what their job description is, but what they actually did. I really appreciated that because absolutely. I love the fact that she started as a par educator and had that range of experience. I love that makes, you know, our paras are such an important part of our educator system, and to have that kind of experience and relatability. I feel like the structure that one must need to run such a large district, fifty-two hundred students, would be a good fit for us. I know it's a very different size community, but I do feel like there's space for somebody with an eye towards that, and I do feel like she has an eye towards that, of filling in areas where policy is perhaps missing, procedures, reflecting on that. So I like that about her as well, I guess. So those are all of the positives. You know, I am concerned about lack of networking, but I think she's up to the task. I think she's a woman who finds resources, so I, I don't feel like that's... I mean, I, I, it's hard to compare someone new to the system to somebody with twenty years of experience having built those networks, but I, I feel like she can and will. My biggest concern actually is an apples and oranges thing. Her experience with her district is, it's such a different educational style system. I actually thought it was interesting that she uses, they use the same math curriculum that we do, the iReady. So that was, that kind of was a little bit of a check for me because it's, it, it's a different community. It's a different structure. And I guess the last thing I'll say is that I really appreciated the fact that she keeps the, the contracts on her phone so she can look them up. I appreciated that she had regular meetings with all heads of the unions. I, and I appreciated the fact that she said that for a particular principal who perhaps might be headed in a different, different direction, using that resource because it's in the best interest of everybody, that that particular principal didn't go too far along the other, too far down a direction where she would have to intervene. So using the resources, the union, to work with that particular principal to kind of deal with some corrective action before it became an administrative action, I thought that was savvy. So I, I, I think Dr. Menard would be solid. Obviously, when you are talking about students looking in the face of an educator, they'll, they'll get a very different look. I think she's up to developing those relationships, but I think for all those reasons, Dr. Menard is my second. And I don't think Dr. Gilson would be a great fit.
I'll jump in. And, boy, I thought long and hard about this. I just want to thank all the candidates and everybody in the community who's participated in this. It's been an amazing process. All three finalists are extraordinary, I think. It's highly experienced and accomplished, and they all bring different skills and, and strengths would bring that to the work. But I'll cut to the chase and say my, my preference is also for Dr. Herman. Her district is highly diverse, multicultural, multilingual, and it is more like our district even than the districts of the other two candidates. And I think that, and that's nothing against the other candidates. I mean, you know, Massachusetts is what it is, and their districts are what they are, but I think that experience that Dr. Herman would bring, having been in St. Croix for such a long time, would be, would be wonderful. And the, the Massachusetts, you know, not familiar, is that a strength or a weakness? I don't know, it could be both. Massachusetts is a small state, you know, we only going to just keep... Massachusetts is a small state, you know, like, we only gonna just keep circulating the, the superintendents we've got? Or we bring in new people, uh, with new ideas, who've done different things and, and may, um, make some great change and, uh, and look at us with a outsider's perspective, perhaps. I think that could all be, that could be really good. Other things, um, I liked so much about Dr. Herman's, uh, interview, what she has said in, in the forums and in our interviews, diving into the data over and over, going into the data to figure out what is working and getting more and more granual to, granular to find out who, who, who is it not working for? And now what do we do about that? You know, how do we make sure that, you know, we make the changes to the physical environment? We make change to the curriculum, whatever. What do we have to do to make sure that every student thrives? That's not to say that, you know, is one hundred percent successful with that, but it's a clearly a really strong commitment to, um, to ensuring or trying to get every, you know, doing what the district can to, um, serve every student. And that's what we want. So, um, I'm really excited to hope that she may be our new superintendent. We'll see.
I guess I'll speak. I have similar, uh, thoughts that everyone else has said. I think they were all great candidates. If I had to, um, look at the data and everything that we've gotten, I would say that, um, Dr. Gilson unfortunately probably would be my third choice. And I would have to say that, uh, Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman would both be up there for me for different reasons. Um, and I have concerns about both of them for different reasons. So I'm, I, I am enjoying listening to everyone's comments about those two. And I've been thinking a lot over the last few days, um, about my own bias and my own, um, queerness and how that sits with me with Dr. Menard and how that sits with me with Dr. Herman. And I think they both present different, um, views on those. And so I don't know, but those are my top two.
So I will add, um, I, Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman were also my, my top two. For all of the reasons everybody has already said. And I listened to, for both of them, the way they talked about other people. And so I very much appreciated how Dr. Menard, um, if someone had a good idea, she gave them credit and said, "I'm gonna incorporate this into how I do things," or did that. So I think, um, that is important, um, especially with our educators. We want to make sure that their voices and, and opinions feel heard and valued. And I feel like she would do a good job with that. I also really appreciated how, uh, Dr. Herman talked about the students. She talked about the kids. She told us about interactions she had with them and it seemed like, um, she related very well to them, not only in the stories that she, she told us, um, but also in, in the feedback that we've received. Um, and I think that's really important. You know, the whole reason any of all this is here is for the kids, right? And so they, they're, um, how, how our topmost leaders see them is, is really important to me. So, yeah.
One of the things when, when you are interviewing people at this level is to, is that I like to do is to listen to how they answer the question. And the other thing is how they do not answer the question. And, 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 and a lot of instances when you, if you're in that position, you do not know how to answer the question. If you're really, really good, you invent ways of making a good answer. And, um, both Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman did quite well in that. Both of them had all the skills that I would want to have in a sup- superintendent. You know, after getting past their ability to communicate, uh, student-centered kind of focus that they had, after getting past that, the next thing that I wanted to, I wanted to focus on is how they would manage, how they would manage the enterprise. One of the things that, if you've ever been in a leadership position, when you, and I have, walk into a situation, you've just been hired, uh, you not only have to deal with the, the short-term, medium-term and long-term, but the short-term, you still have to make decisions, starting day one. You also have to be able to get a hold of and diagnose the enterprise really quickly. Not over a hundred days, but within the first two weeks. When I looked at the entry plans for, uh, Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman, Dr. Menard just stood out as a manager, as an administrator, had, who had the depth of experience. When you looked at her, the way she constructed her entry plan, it was a manager. It was as an administrator, someone who has been there, someone who is definitely steeped in the art of administrators, administration and management. Taking the, u- using that as a filter and as a way of looking around and screening, taking for granted, uh, that what they presented in terms of their student focus, staff focus, et cetera, it was all there. Both Menard and Dr. Herman had it all. But in terms of what I see what is needed, I need to feel comfortable about a person coming in and taking command and getting their message across quickly, diagnosing what the management and administration issues are, getting some, uh, hitting the ground, well, in, in, in terms of running and knowing how to chart their way forward. When I look at the entry plans, Dr. Menard was clearly there. Dr. Herman, I mean, Dr. Herman could do the job, but I have, I have, I have, I have some reservations uh, a, a, about her and relationship to her stepping in to this Amherst, regional Amherst School as a superintendent and navigating all of the issues that are there. Uh, and coming from a culture where she really has risen up through the, to, through, through the ranks in a very complex system, right? One of the things and I, I, questions that I ask her, I ask her, who were her direct reports? You know, who, 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 who reports to her? And she couldn't name all of them. And that was instructive to me. You know, I would know who my direct reports were. You know, I, I would know that because those are the people in my inner circle. So that concerned me. Do I think that she could do the job? Yes. Do I think that when she's on the job, whether that is something that, she would be able to stick with? I think, I think coming from as far as where she's coming, I have some severe reservations. So, bottom line for me, uh, in terms of making the decision, I would have to think very carefully about Dr. Menard versus Dr. Herman.
I was gonna say, I think we've all gone around and at least started our conversation, so if there's round two, Jennifer, I thought I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, um, I have a, I have a question for the committee, which is, I recall the question to Dr. Herman about who reports to her, and I recall her answering it with a series of people and titles. I don't recall her expressing that she couldn't name all of them. Does anyone else recall that?
I didn't say that she, what happened was that she, when I asked for her direct report, she started naming them and said, "Well, I," and then said, "Well," and then stopped. You can go back and mutate, but she did.
I didn't interpret that to mean she couldn't.
Well, I mean, all of us have different interpretations of events and reality sometimes escapes us all.
So in my previous comment, I spoke about my personal opinion of the candidates. I also want to point out that several people in the committee mentioned that there was kind of a toss-up. And so, um, I think it's also important to consider all the input we got from the community. And, um, there seems to be a clear preference for Dr. Herman. And I think that's important to consider because, well, we have to, you know, have meetings with the new superintendent once a week. I think there's people who have, who will work, uh, on a much closer basis with that person. And so I, to me, that input, in addition to my, my own opinion, is really important. And I think in that context, we have, uh, a pretty clear picture on who is preferred.
Thank you. More comment? Deb?
So I suppose, taking the individuals out of it for the moment, would we want to discuss which managerial acumen, acumen versus, um, ability to develop interpersonal relationships with the community? Off the bat, which of those two, how we think about the relative importance of them? No, okay, never mind.
All right. Clearly, from all the feedback from the forums and all the information we received, Dr. Herman was over- overwhelming choice, clearly there. I have incredible reservations and I have some fears that she, she may enter into a situation. And, and it's, I had just have, I have, I have severe concerns. And I want our superintendent to come in, be here for some time and, and to, and to give us some stability. I just have concerns. Those concerns may never, not play out, but my anxiety is there.
Uh, Sarah and then Hannah.
Yeah, I might have to say. Oh, sorry, just trying, I was just trying to see, see her. I'm, I'm not arguing with what you feel, I just want to understand, maybe it's both of these things, is it partly, it's partly because she's not, doesn't have Massachusetts experience? Or is it that she's making such a big move, move? And you're not sure she'll stay? Or, or it was some, and/or other things?
When I look at her entry plan and when I think about what she said and how she answered the questions, as an administrator and a manager of a complex system, I, and a system that has all of the various components to it as Amherst does, and I compare her entry plan to the Dr. Menard's entry plan, it puts up the two of them to me. And then the thing, the decision, decision comes down to what is more important to this system at this particular point in time? Is it a person who can, who has proven that they can manage across systems? Who has the managerial depth and expertise, as demonstrated in their entry plan, to do what this system requires doing on day one? And to me, that is Menard. Now, that may not, and, and, and the only reason, you know, the only reason I say that is that we have been in a position before, as, as a school committee, that we have hired a person, uh, who came from, came from Florida. Didn't last very long for a number of different reasons. And, and I was a part of it, and that was painful. I do not wish to go through that again. And I, you know, I don't want to prejudice people against Dr. Herman. I just want you to hear that I have some anxieties about hiring her and that, uh, I do not wish for her to come into a situation where, when I look at her managerially and administratively, in terms of her functioning in the system, as opposed to Men- Menard, as an administrator and manager, Menard far exceeds her.
Anna?
So I find that very interesting. I think I didn't see the, so I, what I would say is, Dr. Herman's entry plan is a little bit more bare bones. Um, it's de- definitely not, I, I feel like it didn't fully reflect all of the answers that she gave in her interview sessions and in her community sessions. I went to every, uh, so I, I went to the community online session, I went to the in-person session, and I went to the, the interview. With Joni, I, I missed the, um, online virtual community session, but I went out to dinner with her and talked to her over dinner. So I, I made a pretty strong effort to gather, um, information from as much um, interaction with the candidates as I could. I, I don't think I have the same reservations about Dr. Herman being a strong manager as you do. I think the fact that she is a superintendent right now and that she has been promoted from within multiple times because of her ability to lead, um, gives me some confidence that she will be able to step in and, uh, be a good leader from the start. I do think there's gonna be a learning curve. I think there's no doubt that there's gonna be a learning curve for anyone coming from outside of Massachusetts. But I, you know, again, I think, uh, I can't remember, Sarah was saying, do we always just want to hire someone from within Massachusetts? Or do we have some room to invite people from outside of Massachusetts who have less experience with our systems and our regional school systems? Who could maybe then learn those systems, but then also provide some really innovative or new ideas that come from a different experience? And so I am sort of interested in that perspective. I definitely have, you know, some reservations about Dr. Herman's ab- ability to connect with the transgender and, um, LGBTQIA community. I think she, she, you know, the way she answered questions, um, she seems to be very, um, student-focused and have no biases related to working with any population. And, you know, I have some reservations about Joni being able to bridge the racial gaps in our community. And so, you know, I think there's a little bit of balancing act here. But I, I, I think I would like to hear a little bit more about your specific concerns about, um, sticking around or like, I, I think, I, what I think I'm hearing is that you're worried that she's gonna get pushed out and in some way not want to stay, not because she's far away from her home, not because she's, um, never been in Massachusetts before, but because the community can be difficult sometimes and that she might not be up for dealing with a little bit of friction at the start. Is that a fair assessment or is I, did I totally misread you? I'm sorry.
Going from one place, country, to United States, even though it's United States versus Ireland. and where you have been all of your adult life and your professional life, and moving to another community far away, not only just weather-wise, but also the transitions that need to take place are tremendous. And that is, I, I guess my fear is that and I really have no right to say this, except that my, it's a fear that it may be a bridge too far for her at this point in time. And again, that it may not be. It may, it's only conjecture on my part. It's all it is. It's a gut feeling. And it's, you know, which has no credibility anywhere. Has no credibility. But I, I want everyone to appreciate what she is about to enter and what she is about to go through if we choose her. Be really sensitive to that. Understand that. And that whatever comes up, how are we? We're here. If she is selected, how are we going to onboard her into this community? All right.
Tillman?
That's what a powerful speech you made there.
So I, I paid a little bit less attention to the entry plan than to the answers that we got in the interview. That was really, the, the interview question was really my, my main source of, of my, my, what feeds into my decision process. And I feel that both Dr. Menard and Dr. Herman gave very good managerial answers. I think there, there were some very specific scenarios on how they, how they dealt with arguably different situations. But that they were able to, you know, realize the problem, come up with a plan of action, implement it, and, you know, succeed at some level. And so I'm not, I'm not too concerned. I do acknowledge that going from one environment to a totally different one in terms of, you know, the Massachusetts versus another area is, is an important thing. But the best indicator of success is what people have done previously in a particular environment. And so I, I, I'm not too concerned about it. Having moved from Europe to the US a long time ago, I know it's a big step, but
You're still here.
Well, I'm still here, and, you know, my experience doesn't mean, has any meaning for other people. But this is not something so unusual that we would have to be particularly concerned about it. I assume that anybody who applies for this position has thought through the implications that it has for their professional and personal life. And so since the interview, I assume that they're ready to take that step. So I, I hear what you're saying. I'm not addressing committee members, sorry. I, I understand the concern about making a big move, but it is not something that I see as a problem.
Jennifer?
Um, I really appreciate all this discussion, and I think it's healthy when we don't all agree 100% on something. I actually think it's a, it's a positive thing. I, I wanted to suggest maybe after you clear out your queue, that we like do an informal straw poll, just to see where we are, non-binding, informal, once you, once everyone, once you clear out your queue.
Margaret?
I just wanted to say that one of the questions that I had about Dr. Herman, but I think it also could apply to Dr. Menard, is how is the community going to support this person? How are we going to support this person? Because anybody who comes in needs our support. And I'm just going to say it. In this town where everybody says the, the only thing that's silent is H. In Amherst, it's a difficult place. It can be, I mean, it can be a great place, but it can be a really difficult place. And we know there have been instances of people being brought in and leaving. So, I, you know, whichever person we choose, we have a big responsibility, along with the administration, to do a good job of helping this person, whichever one it is.
Some process questions. I, I'm not ready for a straw poll yet. Um, I'd like to, to, to kind of, I'm not ready for a straw poll. And maybe some of my questions, after people discuss them a little bit, I will be. One is, so I have three. One is the entry plan. We didn't require it. I can see the differences between the documents. One is much more detailed, and the other is a little bit more general. But since we didn't ask for it as part of the application, how much weight can we give it? That's one question. The second is, this has been really hard. I, I, I spent a lot of time spinning my wheels. You know, here we're making this momentous decision. And we've gotten feedback from the community. We spent about an hour and a half with each person. And we have four pages of paper as part of the application, separate from the entry plan. We've got, you know, the abbreviated CV and abbreviated references. And how, how do you make a decision? I mean, feedback from that. How do you make a decision based on that? And I do remember the person who didn't last long. And I guess I would ask Irv, in retrospect, were there any red flags that were toward, or in, that can be addressed in that situation that we might be looking for here? So those are my three questions. How do you make this decision? Can we, how much can we weigh the entry plans and any red flags?
But if you're asking me in terms of that experience, the immediate red fa- flag was the inability of the person to land here and stay here and move here. That was the first one. That was a very big red flag.
That's not going to be the case.
I know, I understand. It was very, very, very big red, red flag that didn't come out during the interview. Just didn't come out. Was hidden there. Anyway, as I said, I, I can see both of them very, being very successful here. And I wish I didn't have this anxiety about Dr. Herman. I do. It's there. And it, but it doesn't mean that she will not be a great superintendent. It's just that that's my anxiety that's coming out from looking at her, 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 her resume, hearing her talk, and then looking and comparing what I, when you have a situation as Amherst, which is almost, in some senses, people will say that it's in crisis. All right. That staff are looking for a leader to come in and take over and lead them. And, and also I look at the, the, just as this sheer number of decisions that are going to have to be made in the first several days in a couple, uh, two months. I, 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 I think back, well, who's the person's most ready for that in terms of what, what the, what's on pa- paper? It's Dr. Menard.
Sarah?
Whether a person needs to move, or, you know, what their personal situation is, you know, they've applied. That's not my, that's not my concern. I believe them when they say, each one of them says they, they want to be our superintendent. So I'm not going to worry about somebody having to move here. I, I believe they're already committed to doing that if, if they take the job. Secondly, they all know about Amherst. They, even if they haven't lived or worked here, you know, they've, they've done their homework. It's hard not to know how complicated and noisy and, you know, what, what the situation is. They seem to have their eyes, all of them, eyes wide open, and they want to come. They see, they all see beyond the, the pain and the upheaval, which is all real, to the, to the wonderful work that is happening in our, in our schools. So yes, the new superintendent, whoever it is, will need our support. And we'll work on that. But that's, you know, regardless of, of who we choose, that'll be the case. I think I'm not at all concerned about Dr. Herman's managerial experience. I mean, she's, she's been doing it in a different place, but still, it's part of the United States education system. She's certainly very thoroughly versed in all the federal requirements and brings a lot that is very transferable. So yes, she will need to learn some things. She'll have a team. There'll be a lot of people who already know, you know, what the, what the reports are and who has to file what when. And, you know, that, that'll work itself out. I expect there'll be, I hope there'll be a, some kind of transition work from the acting, or the interim superintendent to the new superintendent. The new superintendent won't just be abandoned in the office and left to figure it out. Oh, what else was I going to say? Oh, and Dr. Herman has clearly done her research on us. I mean, you know, finding our old strategic plan that never got quite, quite got over the finish line. And she already knows a lot about us. And she knows what to look for. And all she has to do is ask, and she will get the information. Even if it's impossible to find on our possible website or whatever. And, and one thing I liked about her entry plan is that there was, even, even though, yes, they all involved listening. The new person, new superintendent, of course, has to get to know everybody. Of course, has to listen to people. But, but she seemed ready to move faster to make decisions about improving education than the others. It seemed like she could, she planned on walking and chewing gum at the same time. Yes, getting to know everybody, developing the relationships, but also digging into the data and, and making some progress. So I obviously don't share Irv's anxieties. I think she, she can, she's well-qualified and can do it.
William?
I was gonna just say that with, as with Irv, I have anxiety also about Dr. Herman. I feel that Dr. Menard, for me, would be a safe, solid choice, who I feel can do the job and do the job well. To be honest, she wasn't a rock star for me in the interview process. I feel like Dr. Herman was more of a star in the interview process than Dr. Menard was. But I have anxiety about Dr. Herman. I feel that Dr. Herman could heal the community in a way that Dr. Menard wouldn't be able to. I also feel that Dr. Herman brings a risk that that healing explodes instead of actually healing. And so that's kind of where my anxiety is at. I think that if Dr. Herman comes and knocks it out of the park, she will do a better job for the district in the long run than Dr. Menard. But I just have anxiety over how the community embraces her, how she reacts to all of the community. And she speaks a, a, a language of, of equal love to all, but I, I have hesitation about that. So. And that's kind of where my, my feelings are. So for me, a safe choice would be Dr. Menard. For me, the potential that Dr. Herman could bring, I would say Dr. Herman. And try to put my anxieties aside.
Jennifer?
So, um, a couple of things. I don't have any concerns about Dr. Herman's managerial abilities or at all. And I don't have any, I don't, I don't have any fear or anxiety about that. I know I attended her, I attended the virtual community session, which is on sort of like day one of her visit. And she told us, she said in that virtual community session that she gets, spent some time that day driving around Amherst. And she said it felt like home. She said it's different from where she's from, but she said it felt like home. And then later in the session, she joked about needing a recommendation for a Realtor. So it seems like she's committed to being here and moving here and being part of the community if she gets the job. I want to urge us to not let our fear guide us. You know, Irv has said in the past, hope is not a plan. And I also, I want to say, fear is not a reason to not move forward with, with a decision that we think is best. And then I also wanted to address Deb's, two of your quest, two of Deb's questions. First is like, how do you make a decision? And, you know, Bridget, you said earlier that you think we have all the information that we need to make these decisions. And, but, but also, like, we have limited information. We have the, the time that we spent and the documents we've received. And I think that, like, our, part of our job is to make these difficult decisions with limited information, to do what we think is best with all the information that we have. And it's, it's incomplete. We will have to make some assumptions. And, and that can be hard and can be scary. But that's, that's why we're, you know, that's, that's the responsibility that we're in, in, in these seats. And the question of how much weight to give the entry plans, I guess my answer is as much or as little as you want. As much or as little as is comfortable for you. We have entry plans from all three, so it's not an unfair or equitable situation.
So I think it's an important question to figure out how we can make sure that whoever we hire is set up for success when they come here. And one question will be how well they will be received by the community, right? I think you asked that. And we have some indication from the community, right? We have the feedback. And I was going to quote from that, but I wanted to ask if that is, are those all public?
They're public documents. Yep. They've already been posted to four docs.
So forty-five people ranked Dr. Herman as their number one choice, and eleven chose Dr. Menard as their first choice. So we have, we have some indication there of what is. And so what I'm worried about is even if, let's say it's a toss-up and in the end she was Dr. Menard, we set her up for being in a community that has clearly stated that they prefer a different candidate. And that would make it very hard for her to, to be effective. Because I think the willingness to engage will always be colored by the fact, well, you weren't my first choice. And, and I'm not saying that anybody is, you know, cannot get over that. But we have some input. And to be a successful leader, you have to have people being willing to be led. And if they indicate that the vast majority indicate that Dr. Herman is with whom they resonate, I'm more willing to give leeways to concerns about, you know, experience in Massachusetts and, and the other concerns that people have mentioned.
You know, I, I, I do realize that in terms of Dr. Herman or whatever, or Dr. Menard coming in here, I do know that the administration's has a planned on, onboarding, plan for, for whoever the new superintendent is. So I do know it, and I'm comforted in that, in, in that fact. It, it, it's not like the sixty-eight people who were there. Sometimes, as a person said about the nineteen sixties, and maybe right now, when you had all these demonstrations, it's not about who is there, it's about who wasn't there. And that who are those people who were not there? And how would they weigh in? We do not know. Sixty-eight obviously is not a representative sample of Amherst by any means. So, but again, we're, we here are charged with making the best decision, decision we can with can with the information that we have. And that this, the, the decision that we make, history will only judge it. And, and we may, you know, we, we, we may not be judged really well on it, or we could be judged very well on it. But that, we, we can't, I guess we can't worry about that. Uh, we can't. But for me, um, I, I, I just, you know, I am in a quandary between, uh, Menard and Herman.
Uh, I have Bridgette, Deb, and then William.
So, I don't know, I thought maybe I'd just share a little bit of my process because at first I was leaning more towards Dr. Menard because, um, to be honest, that, that entry plan is pretty vague, even though I really like the, the value statement and the, and the mission in it. I think that's very strong. I'm just a person who likes some concrete detail. And so, um, so I felt that as well. And then there was the other component that I was worried about, which is, I think we're in a place where we really need a shared leadership style and Dr. Menard spoke to that shared leadership style and that the union particularly, they're a team, our teachers of really teacher experts. They're not teachers who are like, oh, this is the curriculum and I'm gonna follow it to T. They're people who are really bringing their expertise to the table, enriching, developing it, et cetera. And so then I worried about the context and how different maybe the, um, the relationship is between teachers and administrators and that type of thing, because I think when she talked to the high schoolers, so this is hearsay, she said, "Well, I'm their boss and they'll do what I want them to do," right?
Sorry, this is Menard?
Um, no, um, Herman, right? Said that when she met with the high schoolers. And so I started to think like, okay, there may be some differences sort of in the cultural context or in the experience that makes, that makes us, that makes me feel more comfortable, right, with Dr. Menard? And then it occurred to me like, actually, if I just go back and take what Dr. Herman said for herself, even her leadership style where she said, "I'll do the walkthroughs with my leadership and show them how I like the feedback and reflection to be given." Or when she talked about how she was gonna work with us and that our mission, our communication things, that she'd be aligning them through and with us, like those pieces. And, um, really how she even developed the identity for the community of the Berry Common Corps in those pieces. I feel like I wanted to just question my own concerns, my own implicit bias about the difference in context. And when I thought more about that and looked at it, then I did find myself, while I, I think, yeah, no human is perfect. And let's be really direct, Amherst is a very difficult person for a person of color to come in and work and take leadership in as well, just because we, we have that embedded in our, you know, in culture in general, right? So I feel Irv's fear and I feel those pieces and yet what I also feel like is that I feel like we do have a stronger candidate in Dr. Herman. So I just wondered, I probably, that was too much rambling and talking out, out my process a little bit, but I just wanted to share it because I think I grappled with some of those same fears and in the end came to, to feel like we do have one candidate who's a little bit stronger.
I think sharing your process is very helpful to hear how people are thinking through things, because we're all gonna think through things a little bit differently, right? We all come with our own experiences and things we've done and how we interpret people and others' actions. And so having the feedback of like how you are working through your thinking is, I think, really helpful and thank you for sharing. Deb?
So I have to say, I think we're in a great place. We have two strong candidates, three, one solid, but two that rise above the third. And, you know, when we begun this process, there was lots of back, background talk about who would wanna come. So, you know, if we clearly had one candidate who stood out among, amongst the three, it wouldn't be such a hard decision. So I, I actually like that we can weigh these two candidates side by side. Uh, Tillman's feedback really resonated with me in that I was thinking, buy-in is really important. I mean, I, I feel this way with my kids and colleges. They're like, "Which college should I go to?" Whichever you want to believe in is the best, because I think they're both have strengths and weaknesses. This community has an ability to turn against superintendents. Both the last two superintendents were heralded, you know, as wonderful people and then very soon that flipped. Uh, yeah, I mean, depending on how you, they started getting pushback pretty early in the process. So I feel like coming in as the community's second choice will under, and, and not really that we've done any systematic studies whatsoever, um, of the community, but the feedback that we've gotten, anecdotally I'll say, um, indicates that the community has a preferred choice.
William?
I was gonna say that I think that, as people have mentioned managerial experience or style, I think a lot of, I'm gonna speak for myself, I guess. I have no idea what the school system looks like in the Virgin Islands. No idea. I know, I have no idea what it means to be a superintendent in that school system. I don't know what her, um, administrative roles are compared to a superintendent here. I don't know. Um, so I think it's hard, I have a hard time listening to people say that they think that she can do it because of her experience, or they think that she can't do it because of her experience, because I don't really know what her experience would be and how vastly different would be from here. But when I watched the interview and I dealt with the interview, I felt like she was the one that stood out based on the interview and that she could do the job and she could be the manager that we want. Um, when I look at the entry plans, I felt like Dr. Menard's entry plan was much more tailored to what we want and I, I felt like Dr. Herman's entry plan was, um, very generic. Um, but at the interview, Dr. Menard was not as strong or as personable as Dr. Herman was. Um, and I feel that if we look at community and we listen to the feedback that we got, I know that, um, a handful of queer staff, students and community members reached out to me and not, I don't think any person had a hesitation on Dr. Herman. And so even though I have my own personal anxiety, it's not coming from the queer population that I spoke to, which I don't speak for all, but, but for the small, minute, little people that came, big people, but like people that came and spoke to me, um, th- there wasn't a hesitation with, with her. And, and I think that it came from her interview and it came from how strong she was with the community involvement and the community forums. So I, I, I think she stands out.
Okay. Tillman?
Um, so the question of what the school district in the Virgin Island looks like was also in my mind. I, in, in the notes that I took during the interview, it said fifty-two hundred students and fifteen principals. And that kind of was a metric that I could understand, right? That sounds, you know, substantial size and multiple units that you need to deal with. And so from that perspective, that satisfied me in being, in making me believe that it's equally complex in an administrative context.
I guess I didn't know who, who was in charge. Was there, was there more staff above her?
No, no.
As far as governors in, in government? That was stronger than our government? That, that was my question, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's a commissioner of education for the, for the islands, if I understood correctly.
Like we have one state.
And I think she reports to that person if I.
And the governor and her own committee, school board, huh? Yeah.
Okay.
So, one of the things that I think about in terms of, uh, Dr. Herman and Dr. Menard, Dr. Menard is a professional networker. That's, I mean, she's totally, and she knows how to make connections really easily. She's expert at it. You look at her resume, you can see it, but when you see her in person and you ask her questions, for instance, I asked a question just to test it out. I said to her about Ohio and her being from Ohio. And she just jumped right into it to make that connection with me in terms of where, so, so she could do it quickly. That, that, and then you look at her resume, the junior league, her community voluntary experience. Those are, that's a person who knows how to make community connections. So for all of us Amhersts who just came off of, of, of being, uh, elected, you know what it is to touch people in Amherst and how, and what those power centers are in Amherst, who they are and how, how to connect with them. All of us who have been through that and know who those folks are, are going to have to, if we do select Dr. Herman, assist her through that process and assist her in making those connections and commit to doing that. Because it's something that should, is, is not going to be easy.
Okay.
All right, so all of us, if we do, have to commit ourselves to that.
Okay.
Um, two things. One is that Dr. Menard has been the person taking the responsibility at the top of the chain for a while. Um, Dr. Menard is not. She's an assistant superintendent, so she's got another person up there who is effectively the person who's gonna take whatever it is that has to be taken in terms of responsibility. The other thing I wanted to say is that when I went back and looked at Dr. Menard's CV, the number of organizations and things that she does was a little bit concerning to me. I mean, it's good networking, but is she gonna spend, we need her here. It, I mean, it's good to have the connections, but I was a little concerned when I went back and looked at the list of things that she is doing outside of her district. I mean, I.
Well, she wants to be secretary of education.
Is it time for the straw poll?
I, my list isn't quite done yet. Uh, Deb?
So I dug in a little bit to licensure, 'cause I, I wanted to know how to compare. And I can't say I'm a hundred percent sure on this, but I just wanna share with you what I discovered. Um, I was very concerned before Dr. Herman got the provisional license, because I was very concerned that Desi wouldn't grant it and we would be stuck. So once she got that provisional license, I was much more relieved to know that, that she got a professional, I'm not a professional, but she got, she is fully licensed in Massachusetts, so that's good. On the other hand, from what I could tell, and it was very complicated to figure out, in the U.S. Virgin Islands, there is no licensure process for a superintendent. It's a direct appointment by the governor. There's licensure levels for educators, but not for, and I'm not a hundred percent on this, but that's the best I could tease out. So that's it.
Um, so I just wanna say at this point, I think, I, I actually think, uh, Dr. Herman's not being from Massachusetts is a strength, um, because we need to, you know, spice things up a little bit and she's gonna, she's gonna come with new and different ideas that we haven't used or thought of, just because she's had such a different experience. And I, I think that is, that is a strength. Um, and I don't remember who said it, but like, there's a big team around her of really smart, Sarah, um, really smart, really qualified people that all have a vested interest in this being successful and in, and, and in her succeeding. So whatever, uh, supports that will look like, we would need to offer those to any superintendent, because they're all coming from somewhere else. Um, but I, I think Dr. Herman's non-Massachusetts-ness is, is a strength. Um, so, Anna?
I just wanted to sort of echo what Margaret was saying. Um, there are, th- the fact that Dr. Herman has risen through the ranks in the same district and been internally promoted several times is actually a, a huge bu- benefit, I think. It's, it says that people in her district like her. It says that they value her leadership, that they think that she is a good leader and that she deserves additional chances and that she ader, and they've continuously given her additional responsibility. And she's, you know, she's definitely, um, uh, a go-getter. You know, she definitely wants to keep moving and challenging herself and getting promoted and continuing to do new things. And she's looking for a vastly new experience than she has had in the past, because she's kind of, she, you know, she's the superintendent, so like, what's next for her in the Virgin Islands? She wants to do something else. So I think this is a good opportunity for her. I think this is a good opportunity for us. With Joni, the times that she's moved and the very short amounts of time that she's spent in any one position, it's a tiny bit of a red flag for me. I, she's, I think the longest she's spent in any one place is, yeah, like, four years and most of them, it's like two to three years, um, tops. And, y- you know, maybe it's because she's just, you know, she's good and she wants to move on and she wants, the next position that she can get that's a promotion is somewhere else. That's possible. But I would like to, you know, the, the fact that someone can stick around for a little while, I think that's a definitely a, a positive thing. So.
Irv?
I don't have anything else to say. I, I guess what I would like to know, are we ready to come to vote? And if we're not ready to come to vote, um, do we wish to continue this discussion?
Maybe now would be a good time for that straw poll. See if we're close and if not, then we should have some more discussion.
So you, we should just name the candidate we, is that how you wanted to do it?
Yep, I think so. I can start on the side and I will say, uh, Dr. Herman.
I would say Dr. Herman.
Dr. Herman? You're gonna say pass?
No, I'm not gonna say pass. Uh, I'm gonna go Dr. Herman. I'll, and, and all of you, I'll remember everything you've said. If things started going, I want to make sure that you're gonna be the stand with her when things get tough.
We want this to succeed just as much.
I, I'm, I'm gonna remember.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna say Dr. Herman.
Dr. Herman.
Herman.
Dr. Herman.
Herman, and I think that Irv's concern comes from a really heartfelt place, I'd say.
Herman.
Uh, Jennifer?
I'd like to make a motion. I move for the regional school committee to appoint Dr. Arisilda Seomara-Herman as the superintendent of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, sub- subject to successful contract negotiations.
Second.
Uh, okay, so it's been moved by Jennifer, seconded by Tillman. Uh, all those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh. I apologize. Is there any further discussion we'd like to have? Okay, now, uh, all those in favor?
Not yet. You're not a regional.
I'm always on the outside.
Sorry, Margaret. All right. Uh, so that means it is unanimous, um, for the regions that, uh, Dr. Herman.
Now, I would propose a motion. I would move to appoint, um, Dr. Herman as the superintendent of Amherst Pelham and Amherst Pelham Regional School Districts effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, subject to successful contract negotiations.
Second.
So, having been moved to second, is there any discussion? All those from Union Twenty-Six who are in favor of it? I think it's, it's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you all for. Excellent. Thank you all for your dedication and hard work to this. We are not done. Don't go away. Look at that. Um, so, my computer decided it's all done. So my suggestion for our next few steps, uh, is to, uh, move into executive session to, uh, have a conversation among the committee about the outline of the contract. Um, however, I think we should first recess so, uh, the chairs can go make a quick phone call to Dr. Herman, um, and then proceed into executive session, should we decide to.
So we'll have that motion in a few minutes, in a while, to move to executive session? Or are you making the formal motion?
I was not making any motion. I was out, making an outline.
Okay, so we will come back and vote on it?
We, we're gonna come, we're going into recess and we're gonna make a phone call.
Right.
I think at least one livestream went to the Virgin Islands so far.
Can I just say, I wanna, uh, again, thank all of the candidates. And they were all fantastic. And that any criticisms that were expressed in this inter- in this discussion is just comparative and all of them were very strong candidates. We would have been, we would be lucky to have any one of the three be our new superintendent. And I just wanna thank them for their contributions.
Yes, absolutely.
Careful, we don't have a signed contract yet, so.
Yeah, so, so don't go anywhere.
Of all, you know, we don't know anything about her.
So I think, suggest we take a short recess? Say we'll come back at 7:15?
7:15?
The mics are live.
Yes.
It's just like, uh, if we need to take notes or like, I don't know, if there's everything in here at all. My cat was doing that, but now that the weather's a little nicer, he goes out and gets some exercise. And so he's sleeping through the night again.
You can always say yes and then say no.
I know, I think, I mean, not saying that, that's what I'm doing, but, not while the mics are on. Yeah. But is the tape.
They're.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, we are back in session, 7:15, for the region. Irv?
And we're back in session at 7:16, for the Union 26.
Irv, would you like to report out?
Uh, Sarah Bass and I called Dr. Herman, and, uh, she enthusiastically accepted.
She's probably watching, so.
So, it is all pending, um, successful contract negotiations, and, so, speaking of which, I am going to, uh, move that we consider entering executive session pursuant to GLC 3A, oh my gosh, sorry.
Do you wanna say, like, the enter and not, not just consider?
Yeah, not consider, enter, we're gonna.
We have to, we have to vote.
Actually do it. Do you want the printed copy?
Uh, let me have, give it to her, and then she can pass it back to me.
It, it's fine, it was just a glare from my computer, I've, I've sorted it. Bless you. I move that we consider entering in, uh, executive session pursuant to, uh, GL Section, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent Contract, uh, Dr. Herman, with no intent to return to open session.
Second.
Friendly amendment, can we strike the consider? And, so that we're voting to enter executive session?
She didn't say consider.
I, I thought I heard you say, move to consider entering.
Yes, but that, that is the language from the attorney.
Really?
So that is, that is, yep, because we are considering it, and then we vote on it, and then.
Okay.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Uh, Jennifer?
Just as a point of discussion before we vote, um, could the chairs contact Dr. Her, Dr., the other two, um, and let them, I, I would assume, let them know that we have offered the position to another candidate pending successful contract negotiation, and they should all understand what that means.
Yes, thank you, definitely.
You're second.
Uh, Tillman?
I second it.
I'm.
Oh, you did?
Can we, all right, I'm just gonna ask a question. Can we just raise our hand vote, or is it executive session and we have to go around and specifically say?
I don't know.
Let's.
Let's just do roll call, to be sure.
Just to be sure.
Okay. Deb?
Yes.
Uh, Bridgette?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass? Yes. So. Sorry, Margaret. So, the, uh, Regional School Committee is now entering into executive session.
All right. I move to enter into executive session pursuant to GLC 30A, Section 21A, uh, 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, uh, with Dr. Herman, with no intent to return to open session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have to do, do we do roll call? All right, Margaret?
Aye.
Uh, William?
Aye.
Sarah Bass?
Aye.
Um, Sarah?
Aye.
And Bridgette?
Aye.
Irv? Aye. We're in executive session. Thank you all. Whose is this?
So, email says I move.
Um, to get to.
Not to consider. We can just.
I think it says on the agenda, because it's unclear if we might do it or not, we would adjourn or.
Where are we moving to?